Excellent, welcome everybody to today's Wednesday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty special meeting and joint meeting with Mountain View County to address our IDP. So I will call today's meeting to order. And look for a motion to adopt today's agenda. Counselor Blatts.
Thank you, worship. I move that we adopt special council meeting agenda for Wednesday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty as presented.
Excellent. Comments, questions, concerns? None? I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And opposed? Alright, so let's to new business. We're gonna have the joint public hearing for the inter municipal development plan or IDP. The hearing will be for one PM, so we do have a little bit of time before we go over to the Mountain View County Zoom meeting, so. Should I be introducing this now or introducing it once we're in the joint meeting? At the joint public. Okay, so we don't. Alright. Well, it looks like we have some time, folks. Yes. Pardon me?
Your worship?
Yes.
I see that a number of people have already started to join us.
Yes.
And I wonder if we should explain, just in case they're joining us for the bylaw, for the mask bylaw?
Yes.
That it won't be addressed quite yet.
Yes.
It won't be addressed.
Yeah.
Give her time.
Yeah, absolutely. We do have some joint meeting with the Mount, with County Mount. And so we'll take care of that stuff before. And the mask bylaw is due to be started at three PM. So there are some individuals here strictly for the mask bylaw. You can take a break and go do whatever it is you'd like to do and then join, rejoin us at three PM. We won't be starting that portion of this meeting until then. So rest assured, you don't have to sit through it all. Although it will be quite interesting, a joint meeting with the County of Mountain View and discussing our IDP, which I'm sure both, both councils are very, very proud of to be able to get this monument, monumental document put together to comply with the Alberta government regulations. So we're quite proud of all the work we've done. So if you'd like to stick around, that'd be great. If you want to go and take care of your personal lives until three o'clock, you're more than welcome to do that as well. We'll certainly let you back into the meeting at that point in time. Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Harper.
Mayor Mizichka, it's Mercy.
Yes.
All of the instructions to join Mountain View County's regular council meeting are on the agenda on the website, should anyone wish them.
Yep. So it is actually a Zoom meeting, so we'll come out of this one and go into a joint meeting with with Mountain View County and their council. Here.
So Mr. Mayor has, this meeting has concluded, is moving into the joint meeting. I'm leaving the meeting at this point to try to join the next one.
And I'll call a recess until one o'clock.
Okay.
Alright, we'll see everybody in the other platform.
Okay, so we'll leave this meeting then.
Yes.
Yeah. Mayor, reset, is point of order Mercy here recess the meeting and reconvene in at Mountain View?
Yes, no, sorry, I did recess.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Sorry, my computer.
No, that's alright. I called a recess a few bottom. Yeah, no, I think we have to get out of this one. Recording. There we are. There's the red dot. Alright, I'll call today's meeting back to order after our recess and splitting off and going and having public hearing at Mountain View County's meeting as well. So let's move right along. Prepared to, is anybody prepared to make a motion for second reading? Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, your worship. I move that council gives second reading to bylaw number twenty twenty dash thirteen.
Excellent. Thank you, counselor. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Amendments, anything to speak to from council or administration before I moved the vote? Seeing none, I will call votes. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. Just for, do I have Counselor Thompson? Everybody in except for Thompson, so I may redo that vote. Do you see him at all there, Sean? Okay, let's hold tight.
He was there, he's gone now. I don't know where.
Wow. Thought I saw him again.
There he is. Alright, Counselor Thompson, you're in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, something happened there.
So we did have Counselor Ryan make a motion exactly as written in our agenda package on, on page three. Of bylaw twenty twenty dash thirteen.
Perfect.
So I will give you an opportunity. Did you have any questions, comments, concerns?
I vote in favor.
Then we'll redo the vote all at the same time. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? There we go, and opposed. Carried. Alright, let's move right along to, Mr. Merritt, do we need to wait? And let Mountain View, that our second reading went through without amendments?
You do not, but I'm just sending a note off to Margarita right now.
Okay, so we can proceed to the third reading?
Yes.
Alrighty, who would like to make that motion? Counselor Harper?
Thank you very much, your worship. It's with pleasure that I move the Town of Olds bylaw twenty twenty dash thirteen inter municipal development plan IDP.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And you are absolutely, it is a very huge pleasure to be having third reading on this particular item. This is the culmination of a lot of very, by both administrations and both councils, both ICC groups. My compliments go out to everybody in, at the Town of Olds and, and Mountain View County for this monumentous Herculean task that we have accomplished here today. So without further ado, ask if there are any other comments, questions, or concerns with regards to the motion on the table? Seeing none, then I will call the votes. All in favor? And opposed? And with pleasure, that motion is carried. Excellent. Well, what an incredible day, folks. Thank you so much for everybody's participation. Like I said, Mr. Merritt, any further things we need to do before?
I do want to speak to, to, this is a very significant document that we just, council just approved. I want to thank council support through the past number of years because it has taken this long. And I also want to say it was a pleasure working with Mountain View County for their efforts to cooperatively work with us on getting this IDP through and the annexation as well. And would be remiss not to thank Craig Teal from PCPS, who is leading the charge in many respects in regards to the, the work here. But also for Scott Chan for the tremendous work that he's put into it from our planning and development department. Job well done by everybody. And to all those people I may have missed, thank you as well.
Excellent. Thank you, CAO. Okay, so that concludes item three B on our special meeting, which brings to item three C, which is the Town of Olds bylaw twenty twenty dash twenty mask bylaw. That is set to start at three PM. So in the meeting, just hang on, would probably be best. Don't leave the meeting. I'm gonna call one more recess until the three o'clock hour. And at that time, we'll reconvene and start with that portion of this, this special meeting of council. Counselor Harper, yes, have your hand up.
Thank you very much, your worship. But I'm just wondering if we should direct our CAO to inform Mountain View County that we did pass third, third reading of this bylaw.
Just in the process of doing so.
Thank you.
I see his head down typing feverishly on his phones. Excellent. Thank you, CAO, and thank you, Counselor Harper, for pointing that out. So unless there's anything else from Counselor Administration at this point, I'll call a recess PM. And once again, people, members of the public, just hang on, don't, don't leave the meeting. Set your timer for three o'clock and come back at three o'clock and we'll reconvene and, and go into the mask bylaw debate. Excellent. Seeing nothing, I tell three PM.
Thank you.
Let's hit record. Alright, so I'll call today's special meeting of council back to order. It's three PM, so that brings us to item three on, on our agenda. Town of Olds bylaw twenty twenty dash twenty mask bylaw. May I have a motion for second before we start debate? Counselor Blatts.
Thank you, worship. I move that second reading be given to bylaw twenty twenty dash twenty indoor public spaces masks bylaw.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Blatts. At this point in time, I'd like Administration, if they'd like, like to give us a bit of an update with regards to the Town of Olds and the decree that we had from the Alberta government yesterday. CAO?
Yes, thank you, your worship, council. Administration would like to speak briefly to the changes that were introduced yesterday by the province. We don't have details on everything and we do need more details. But overall, the province introduced a number of measures to address the rising number of COVID cases in the province. After three weeks, they are going to reassess the situation either to maintain, relax, or strengthen measures. We'll have to wait and see what those would look like. While administration, as you know, is recommending passage of this bylaw, administration in consultation with the emergency management team of the Town of Olds, do see merit in waiting until results of the three week period are known before deciding on the measure. But this will be up to council to decide. With that, I will ask Director Powell to say a few words and then Director Wegstaff to say a few words about our facilities. And then our fire chief to speak about the fire occupancy numbers that businesses are phoning the fire department steadily on. So with that, I'll ask Director Powell to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Just give a thumbs up. Is my volume output strong enough?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so thank you. So in light of the current information that came out from the province, it was a significant suite of, of measures that came into place and they obviously have overtures that speak backwards to our community as well. Back to, not backwards, I correct? And so with that, it enables us to give it an opportunity to have a little opportunity to suggest we may be able to put, press pause on, on a decision. However, I would like to emphasize this situation is extremely fluid. And it can change quickly and abruptly. And having to be able to have a measure such as this in place just enables our community to have so much of a, a better set of tools in our box as well. So basically, I'll, I'll leave it at that and pass this to Director Wegstaff. And then perhaps we can all address questions at the end of this.
And the CAO has asked me to give a bit of an update on the measures that were announced yesterday and how they are impacting our recreation facilities in the Town of Olds before we speak to the mask bylaw. I do just want to indicate that one of the learnings we had when the last, in the spring, when a lot of the regulations were being unveiled, it takes a day or so to go through them, interpret them, and peel back what they mean and what those impacts are because the details do mean a lot of difference to different groups, how they are applied. So we, I did have scheduled with a number of my colleagues, meetings with the Alberta Health Services that were to take place this morning with regards to sport and recreation. However, yesterday, just prior to the province's announcement, that was canceled, will actually postponed, and we're hoping to have another meeting with them on Friday. In the interim with that, it is our, it is our understanding with the discussions we've had with Alberta Health Services that it is clear when it comes to sport and recreation activity, there are no group activities. After that, there's a lot of nuances that we're sorting through and how that's going to need to be applied for our facilities. We do know at this time, there will be some changes to the scheduling at the pool. I will say both the Sportsplex and the Olds Aquatic Center are going to remain open. They are going to have a different offering in the, in the services that will be available. But they are going to remain off it, open at this point in time. The group in the Aqua Center, sorry, in the Aquatic Center, the Aqua Fit is a group setting that is going to be canceled. We are looking at replacing the canceled slots with lane swims. Our family leisure swim portion still, because it was related to being able to be in sequestered areas with protocols in place as to who and how many were able to come in at any given time. Those still are able to be run is our understanding at this point. The one change there is it's not a cohort that would be available. It would only be a family that lives in the same household available for that event. And the number would have to be six. So those are some of the changes at this point. We are still working through the details. We're gonna look at how we can utilize the ice with one-to-one training and family use and allow for both of those to be able, still to be utilized during the next three weeks of the winter season here. The fine details of that, we hope to have finalized tomorrow and be able to release to the public how that's going to work and how they may be able to sign up if they wish to utilize those facilities.
So we will be posting this information to our website and social media once we have more firm details in regards to that. And lastly, can I ask Chief Andrew to speak a little bit about businesses and the requirement for I guess occupancy numbers? Chief Andrew?
Yeah, thank you, CEO Merritt. So part of the announcement made by the premier last night was that local businesses, commercial establishments will be allowed to continue operation with provisions in place for reduced occupancy to promote social distancing and space awareness for patrons and staff. There was references made in the speech stating that the Alberta Fire Code was going to be the measurement benchmark. And then a twenty-five percent rating of what each individual occupancy was given would be the number going forward. So there is a lot of work that has to be done to enact that and to work through. And it has various meanings of application, depending on the type of business that we're talking about. For most commercial establishments where you see small retail space or commercial strip malls, this number has very small impact because I believe that most businesses are operating under a reduced premise already. So where there is a substantial change would be the large box stores. And so we've had a flood of requests from our local business asking what that number is, what number they'll be given and, and how they can apply that as quickly as possible. We are corresponding with the former Fire Commissioner's Office or Public Service Alberta to implement this. They were caught somewhat unprepared for the, all of the questions that would come with it. So they're working to get us some answers for tomorrow and are trying to reassure that this isn't to be implemented until the twenty-seventh. And so right now, we're just taking the names and, and contacts that are requesting this from us and then we'll respond to them with the, the best information we have as quick as we have it.
Thanks, Fire Chief Andrew. And Mayor, that, with that, that is our update in regards to the impacts. As you see, we don't have all the details yet, but hopefully over the next twenty-four hours, we'll be able to get that and share it with the public and with themselves, obviously, has to be determine more information.
Excellent. Thank you, CAO. I just want to let everybody know that on a bylaws such as, as this, typical old public hearings for these types of bylaws. But council and administration and I all agreed that this is a little bit different time that we're in right now. And this is certainly a very contentious issue all over the, well, all over the world, actually. And it's very, seems to be quite contentious in our community as well. So I'd like to reach out to the, to the members of, all the members of the Town of Olds and please, let, let's please respect everybody's position and allow everybody to speak openly and, and try hard to, to open our minds to everybody else's ideas and, and opinions. So we have, we're gonna take this to be very much like, I'm gonna go into the same format as that. So at first, I will ask for people who are in favor of the bylaw to speak. And we do ask that everybody who wanted to speak register beforehand, and we've got that set out now. We don't have as many speakers as, as we had anticipated, but I did, council and I did collectively receive approximately two hundred emails from people. And I'd just like the general public to know that all of those emails have been distributed to everybody on council who will be making the decision here today with regards to this bylaw. And they have had an opportunity over the past two days to, to read everybody's emails. And I do have tasks with the amount of emails we did have, and some of them were quite lengthy and very well thought out, both for and against this, this law. So please know that if, even if you don't have a chance to speak here today, your email, if you did get it in, and I sent emails right up until twelve o'clock this morning, this afternoon to, to counsel the ones that trickled in late. So the council had an opportunity to read those as well. So at this point in time, unless legislative clerk has any arguments, I'm gonna go to her and I'm gonna call on Dr. Darlene Dunzelman. I may be murdering that last name and I apologize. Nobody knows murdered last names better than I do. So doctor, if I, I didn't pronounce it right, I do apologize. So if we could unmute the doctor's email, please make your presentation.
Good afternoon, members of the council and, and the mayor. I'm sorry, I'm not formally, not sure how to do this formally. I'm not a political person by any means. Generally, I'm in the trenches and working. I work for the University of Calgary and I also own a veterinary clinic in the Town of Olds and have owned that clinic for almost twenty years. I've serviced the community of Olds and the surrounding area. And as a veterinarian, I come from an area, a time when veterinarians were highly respected in their communities for the level of education and I think the level of, of advice and public health information that we could give. And it's always changed now a little bit with Dr. Google. Lots of people think that they can look things up and find things out really quickly. I have a large amount of training, seven years to be exact, in everything from medicine to epidemiology, the study of how disease spreads and in, in viruses and virology. And I can tell you that this threat is very real. And I understand that it's a very contentious issue, but we have a large population of elderly people, of at-risk people and people who are living with at-risk people in and around the Town of Olds that need to be protected. For an example, I just wanted to bring out the idea that a number of our current box stores have rules in place to allow patrons to come in with masks, however, not without masks. Recently, one of my employees went to one of the box stores. She was fully masked and taking all of the precautions. And even in the box store, there were many people who were unmasked, and that was against the rules of the store. And so we're leaving people who are sixteen to eighteen, twenty-year-olds and people with minimum wage jobs to enforce things for our safety for everyone. And really, that's very hard on people. And I think it's to this layer of administration is where that ruling needs to come from, so that those young people and those people who are in very poorly paying jobs are not stuck trying to administer rules that should be administered by people like you attempting to keep your county and town and surrounding area and people safe. And so really, that's, that's what I wanted to say. We have been involved in curbside service up and from May, April into June. And then again, just recently went back to curbside. We have, up until that time, been masking in the clinic from September. And anytime that we were with any clients and had clients and patients in the clinic, one by one, we've now gone back to curbside based on my training and what I know. Okay? I hope you take my advice. I understand that it's contentious issue and I understand that you have really big decisions to make. But not making this decision the appropriate way is gonna put us that much further into a pandemic and into danger for all of your family members as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Dunzelman. Is that correct?
Donzelman.
Donzelman. Thank you. Alright, thank you so much for your input. Alright, next on our list, we have Chuck Howard. Gentleman and turn on, make for him. There he is. Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
I would like to also thank council for this opportunity to provide my input into this difficult decision. And I've, I've committed my thoughts, I guess, to writing here partly because I'm, I'm kind of an old fart and I tend to wander and can't stay focused too well and so on. So anyway, I'm gonna tend to read this, I think. Be safer for everyone and you might not have to pull a pin on me. We have lots of rights and freedoms. However, along with those come responsibilities. If people don't respect the fact that they have responsibilities to society, then then laws are passed to protect their fellows. Examples include rights with regard to gun ownership, but laws regarding what one cannot do with guns. Rights with regards to owning and driving a vehicle, but laws with regard to operating that vehicle, including requirements regarding seat belt use and licensing. And I'm going to any further, I just use those as an example because I know none of you need to be instructed on this. Secondly, there's a lot of misinformation out there, particularly on social media regarding the efficacy of masks. However, must be noted that every medical agency in the world now states clearly that masks are one of the most important tools that we have for controlling the spread of the virus. Thirdly, to the point of this meeting, there are currently nineteen cities and towns in Alberta requiring masks, two counties and one regional municipality that have mandated the wearing of masks in public places, and these numbers are growing almost daily as the virus numbers rapidly increase. Since the number of infections in Olds is now increasing steadily, I feel that now is the time to approve a bylaw to require the wearing of masks in public places in order to contain the spread of the COVID virus here before it gets totally out of control. All of us would agree that masks are not particularly comfortable to wear. However, it is a small sacrifice to require people to wear masks for the brief periods of time they spend in public places in order to protect the people who live in, work in, and visit our community. Seniors and others with vulnerabilities can largely protect themselves by staying home when they can. But when it is necessary to go out into the community, they rely on the carefully thought-out mandates of the province and town, as well as the compliance of citizens to keep them safe. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Howard. All right, let's keep moving along on our list. Next up, we have and again, sorry about the last name if I mispronounce it, Doug Manti. Is that correct? Pronunciation of your last name, sir?
Unmute. Hi, it's Doug Manti. How are you?
Manti, sorry. All right, Doug. Our floor is yours.
Yes, well, I don't know if I'm in the right order because I'm in opposition of the masks.
We just had two for the bylaw, two two after.
Okay, no, that's fine. Well, I want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to speak. My wife and I do most of our shopping. We're from Didsbury, but we do most of our shopping in Olds. So this means a lot to us, and I thank you again. So to begin with, we are very much in favor of protecting the public. Protection is extremely important, and this should be the basis of what you do. This is should be based on facts, and does this protect the people? And I have got all kinds of information here, and I'll keep it brief. This, but I'll try to quote, these are the latest statistics. And this is from the Oxford Epidemiologists. And they say the main transmission path is long resistance time aerosol particles, which are less than two point five four micrometers. So it's a very tiny particle, which are too fine to be blocked, and the minimum effective dose is smaller than one aerosol particle. So these particles are so small, a common mask will not stop them. I am all for protection. If these are effective, then use them. But there's more scientific evidence that they are not effective. It gives people a false sense of security, but they do not protect people from catching this virus. I've got a package here, and it says right on the side of the mask package. This product is an ear loop mask. This product is not a respiratory respirator and will not provide any protection against COVID-19 coronavirus or other viruses or contaminants. The manufacturers are putting on their boxes that this will not protect you from COVID-19 because they don't want to have lawsuits. So they already are admonishing people, don't look at this mask to protect you for coronavirus because it will not do that. It's not a respirator. It gives you a false sense of security. They're putting it right on there for a reason. The next thing I'd like to say, this is from the World Health Organization and the CDC Center for Disease Control. And I quote, "We did not find evidence that surgical-type face masks are effective in reducing laboratory confirmed influenza transmission, either when worn by infected persons, source control, or by persons in the general community to reduce their susceptibility." If these masks are effective, if these masks stop coronavirus, I would say pass this bylaw. But the science is not there. These particles are extremely small. The common mask will not protect you from this. I have another article. This is from the World Health Organization. This is a COVID peer-reviewed research, and I quote, "Many countries have recommended the use of fabric masks/face coverings for the general public. The widespread use of masks by healthy people in the community setting is not yet supported by high-quality or direct scientific evidence. There are potential harms to consider," and this is what I want the council to consider, please, "a false sense of security leading to potentially lower adherence to other critical preventive measures. Two, difficulty with communicating clearly. Three, disadvantages for those with mental illness, elderly people with cognitive impairment, those with asthma or chronic respiratory or breathing problems, those who've had facial trauma, those living in hot and humid environments." On a personal note, and one I think the council really needs to consider is we have a son who is extremely hard of hearing, almost deaf. If he wears a mask, he can't if everyone is wearing a mask, he cannot communicate. He can't see facial features. He cannot read lips. There's hundreds and hundreds of people in Olds who are either hearing impaired or hearing limited. You are delegating those people to a silent, non-communicative world. They, our son loves people. He loves to communicate. He looks he looks tellers. He looks at people in the stores in the eyes, says, "How are you? How are you doing? How's your day?" You know what he does now? He stares at his shoes because he doesn't want to look at the people because he looks like an idiot because he can't understand what they're saying because he cannot read their lips. And that, that is hard to believe that you are delegating people to say that you can now not communicate. You can go out in your community, but you're going to be staring at your shoes, or you'd better bring someone with you who can hear. Now, if that was necessary to stop the spread of a virus, he would do that. But it will not stop the spread. There is country after country. There is not one single country that can show you a stat that the wearing of masks has reduced the spike. I can, and I will send you the information if you want. Every country whose mandated masks has had a spike in coronavirus cases. If the mask was effective, either it didn't cause it or it stopped it. How come every country that's mandated masks has seen a spike in coronavirus cases? And then I want to, and finally, I want to state, this is the latest article from the New England Journal of Medicine. And I think that's a peer-reviewed. I think that is a journal that many people would respect. This is on the topic of mask use versus COVID-19 assesses the matter as follows. Again, I quote, "We know that wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little, if any, protection from infection. Public health authorities define a significant exposure to COVID-19 as face-to-face contact within six feet with a patient with symptomatic COVID-19 that is sustained for at least a few minutes, and some say more than ten minutes or even twenty minutes. The chance of catching COVID-19 from a passing interaction in a public space is therefore minimal. In many cases, the desire for widespread masking," and this is a good quote, "is a reflexive reaction to anxiety over the pandemic." That is a direct quote from the New England Journal of Medicine. So it's a knee-jerk reaction. People feel good. We're protecting ourselves. We're protecting others. And that sounds good, and that's a wonderful thing. And if it worked, I'd all be for it. But the problem is, it doesn't work. And it forces many people into uncomfortable positions, and it forces many people into positions where they cannot communicate. Can you imagine forcing an adult to go into situations where he or she cannot communicate with those people? And for what? For absolutely nothing. Finally, I would say if if you do go ahead with this bylaw, which I am totally against for the reasons I stated, I would plead that there'd be exemptions because many people do have health exemptions. They have asthma. They have breathing issues. It would have to be exemptions if you go ahead with this bylaw. But again, I urge you, please do not do this. Ninety percent of the people of Olds are wearing masks already. And for those who do not wear masks for personal reasons, communicative reasons, health reasons, do not force them to join that when it has been proven that it does not stop the spread. Other than in a hospital setting where that person is in direct contact within six feet of a person for twenty minutes. This is not a general public where you're walking in and out of Walmart or Tim Hortons. They said the chance of you spreading that is absolutely minimal. Thank you very much. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council. If they have any questions, please feel free to ask me. I'm here.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Manti.
Thank you.
All right, so let's continue moving along. I think we have Mr. Rick Kohat up our list. We could unmute Mr. Kohat. And if everybody else who is on the call could mute their microphone, we're getting a little bit of back and a little bit of hearing. So if we could have everybody mute your microphone and let Mr. Kohat have the floor for five minutes. Thank you.
All right, can everybody hear me? Looks like I'm unmuted, so that's great. Well, thank you very much, council for having me. I really appreciate it. Yeah, I mean, a lot of the things that I want to talk about are very similar to Doug's. But I'm going to come from a little bit of a different angle from the, kind of the negative impact that masks have on human health. Not just physical health, but also mental health. But, you know, first I'll just kind of say where I'm coming from here and why I'm here to speak. I am a natural health practitioner. I'm a certified holistic nutritionist. I'm also a biofeedback technician. We own a business in Olds called Health Street Wellness. My wife and I do. We've been here for, well, since two thousand eight. I'm also a local farmer, and I do most of my farm business in Olds and the shopping in Olds. So I love this community. It's awesome. It's a really great place to do business and to raise a family. So you know, I care about what happens here, but when I see some of the things that are going on right now, I am gravely concerned and I'm worried about the future of this community for many different reasons. But you know, especially when it comes to these, you know, the wearing of these cloths over your face, these face coverings or or masks, however you want to put it, and how they affect, you know, healthy function of our body. You know, masks, they restrict the very thing that we need most every single day, and that's clean air and oxygen. You know, I'm a health practitioner. I help people with their health every single day. And I've never seen so many people come into our store with concerns about migraines and headaches as I have in the past couple of months while people have been wearing these masks. And it's very concerning to me. But when you start to look at a little bit deeper, it gets even more concerning. So I'm definitely speaking on my own behalf, but also on the behalf of a lot of small businesses in the community as well. You know, when I knew this, this meeting was going to take place, I went around and I talked to a lot of small businesses in the town and and I know that almost all of them are against a mask by law and that it would, it would impact their business negatively. Not in the short term, but in the long term for sure, as it would ours. It threatens the overall social and economic health of our community. But most of all, you know, it impacts negatively our physical health in a very concerning way. So I'm going to read a little bit here. According to factual peer-to-peer independent studies conducted on masking, the negative impact on physical and mental health far outweigh any benefits. Masking or the use of any face coverings increases the amount of CO2, bacteria, toxins inhaled, which are not meant to be recycled into your lungs. This causes many negative health implications in addition to mental and emotional health and stress, as you are likely already aware of. So I'm going to read off some of these, these side effects that are listed. I believe this is from, it's from a medical website. It might even be Health Canada's website about the side effects of wearing a mask for any length of time. So the side effects are cough, fever, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, chest pain, sore throat, runny nose, headaches, and loss of appetite. There is also a high risk of bacterial lung infection due to wearing a mask as well. When you're re-breathing these, these bacterias all day long, especially with children in school, having to use the same dirty mask over and over. So I ask, are you aware that these symptoms are actually identical to those of COVID-19? And those symptoms, I actually, I got a copy of them from the Alberta Health website, and they literally are identical to the ones of wearing a mask. So isn't COVID-19 what we're trying to avoid? But if wearing a mask gives you COVID-19, then why the heck are we wearing a mask? And why the heck would we mandate something like that? So, you know, so we're trying to listen to our, the governments who are, you know, they're mandating this stuff, but why would we listen to something that actually makes things worse? If wearing a mask helped to reduce COVID-19 infections, then why are the cases, like Doug said, going up where masks are already mandated and, you know, crazy measures like the lockdowns are in place, but yet numbers are going up? So I believe it's because masks give you COVID-19, and that's what the, that's what the research shows. So I think it's crazy, and that if we keep on going down this road, that, you know, it's going to destroy communities, and it's going to make things worse. So, you know, to have good physical health, we need social, mental, and economic health in our town. So if it truly is, if that's our goal, then, and if restrictions, rules, and mandates actually help improve these areas, then you know, it boggles, it boggles my mind that, that these, that these rules are actually in place right now because none of them, none of them actually contribute to improving the health in any way whatsoever. So I'm just going to go through a few things here. Restricting or closing businesses, you know, it reduces economic health in our community, which leads to mental health issues and all that kind of stuff. If we restrict gathering, well, there's If we restrict gathering, well, there's devastating mental health issues as a result of that and destroying social well-being. Well, wearing masks, it devastates physical health as well as impacts mental health, as Doug just mentioned and I just mentioned. So I mean, these daily updates, they're, you know, from Deena Henshaw, they're creating mass fear every single day. When it comes to health, what that does is it, it puts people in their fight or flight nervous system. It's called the sympathetic nervous system. So you can't even think logically at that point. And that can lead to massive mental health implication as well as physical health implications. So you know, where are the mandates for, for us improving health in our immune system? As far as I can see, all these mandates are actually reducing the health of not only our physical health, but our, our, our economy and our community. So I don't know, rather than scaring and forcing people into hysteria, you know, why not take a stand as a community? That's, that's what I would ask everybody listening right now. Like, why shouldn't we just, why can't we just take a stand? And implement guidelines that actually help people's immune health rather than hinder it. So my, I would propose that we start by not introducing a mandate regarding masks. You know, it's probably a great place to start. You know, not unnecessarily testing in our community. There's, there's a lot of research that shows that the actual test, the PCR test that's being used is ineffective and creates a lot of false positive results. And getting tested and testing positive destroys our community because it causes more, you know, quarantines and all those kinds of things. So that'll end up shutting down businesses, shutting down schools and everything. So less testing and all right. So I don't know, I just fear that if we don't stop mandates like this one here, we go down a very dangerous path. So if you want the references that I, that I was referencing here, I can send them to you. But I really appreciate the time and the listening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kohat. All right. So that brings us to the end, our public speakers. So I think I'm going to open up the floor to council now. If you have any questions for the speakers or any comments that you'd like to make and debate the, the motion that we have on the table. Counselor Blatt.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I want to say thank you to the people who've come forward today and have spoken to us. And I also want to thank all of the people who did send us either text messages or made phone calls or sent emails. I really appreciate all their comments, either for or against. And I recognize that everybody has a right to decide. And as Dr. Duzelman said, Donzelman, sorry. I have myself witnessed young children or young kids that are working for minimum wage be ostracized by someone who would really at their age know better, just because they're enforcing a rule that that business has put into place. And I just, I guess I want to say to people that if there is a face mask bylaw in place, in a place of business, respect that. That business may be trying to protect their own workers who are probably working for minimum wage as well as the guests that attend. And I, I want to remind everybody that at this point in time, neither has, neither the chief medical officer of health, Dr. Deena Henshaw, or the province have mandated a provincial-wide wearing masks. And there's lots of communities who've done it and, and probably there will be more. But although I made the most, gave the motion for second reading, I, I am kind of leaning to seeing what's going to pan out and within the next three weeks with the new restrictions and hopefully we can, we could have a better idea of how this is going to work. And I realize as Director of our EOC, Brian Powell stated, this is a very fluid situation. And we will probably be back at the table sooner than later, trying to debate what will, what will be the right course? Because I don't believe there's any right or wrong answer in this situation at all. So I just wanted to make those comments if I could. And hopefully everyone else will have a comment as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Blatt. We'll go to Counselor Harper next, then Thompson, then Ryan.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. And once again, thank you to all of our citizens who have taken the time to join us on Zoom and just send emails and comments to us. I don't think any issue has been more divisive in our community than this particular bylaw. And I know that we've all had some sleepless nights about this. And as Counselor Blatt has said, there's no real easy answer to everything. And I just want to say that we so appreciate everybody's comments. We do have serious concerns about the health of our, our citizens. And it is all about respect and honoring decisions, whether they be today or into the future. So I just wanted to make those comments.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Counselor Harper. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. I would like to start by just saying, I don't think we have a greater responsibility than that to our fellow citizen. And I've taken this, this bylaw very seriously and really contemplated on it and the impacts on, on our citizens. And so I greatly appreciate the, the eighty-five people that, that wrote and said they were opposed to the bylaw. To the thirteen people that, that we received that said that they supported a bylaw and to the four speakers we've had today. Beyond that, council has had, you know, several phone calls and other things as well. What Wanda Blatt suggested about the, about the, about Dr. Deena Henshaw was that, that the province has not mandated masks across the province. There are areas where people are required to wear them and in certain circumstances, there's all kinds of exclusions. My, my biggest concern about this is that we are being put in a place as a municipality to enforce something that has not been enacted. It's encouraged. I think we need to continue to encourage all of our citizens to do the very best they can to follow the guidelines and be proactive. But nobody has created an enforcement piece here. This is something that we're contemplating. And I'm struggling to, to make that, that decision to do so when, you know, there are so many other factors that impact people because of these masks. So again, I'd just like to thank everybody for their, their comments and concerns and, and hope people work together for the best of their fellow citizens. Regardless of whether a mask bylaw is enacted or not. At this point, I'm not supportive of a mask bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Counselor Ryan.
Well, thank you very much, Your Worship. And I too want to thank everybody for, for their input. It's been a tremendous last few days, receiving all of these emails before we even, as council, said word one about it. I do appreciate hearing from both sides of the, of the, of the issue because you do get more insight, the more, and you gain more knowledge by, by hearing from everybody. So I appreciate all the input. I, as, I don't know if the council is all aware, but I have a proponent of wearing a mask. I've worn a mask ever since the whole thing started. Every time I leave the house and go to the shop and I'm not wearing a mask for hours on end, unlike our frontline workers who work in the hospitals and other areas where they have to wear a mask all day. I feel sorry for them because it certainly is a pain to have to don them for hours on end. But I do wear a mask and I do it to not just protect myself, but to protect others. I think it's really the responsibility of, of council to protect the health and welfare and the safety of our community. And I, I do think that the community, this community in particular, has done a tremendous job in following and respecting the opinions of others. And you know, a couple of months ago, when you were in the stores, you didn't see hardly any masks. And now I see ninety percent of the people in the stores are now wearing masks. I've been into three or four of them in the past few days and I, I see that a lot of people are wearing masks. I really don't think that this needs to be mandated at this point. Because I think that there's already a willingness on behalf of our community and the residents who live there to do the right thing. And to, and it's for the greater good. I am not in favor of doing this mask mandate at this time. I would like to see how all the restrictions, as Counselor Blatt had mentioned earlier, how they all play out and not just over the next three weeks, but with students not even going back to school until mid-January. Even perhaps waiting until after that for an evaluation. But I think we can take a look at this. As it goes down further, obviously, if we have a lot higher breakouts and these restrictions that the government is doing aren't working, then perhaps we might have to look at something like this. I think all the things that Dr. Henshaw has said, wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands, and stay home if you're sick. If we all did that, I think we'd all be much happier community and have less, less cases on our hands. So that's my opinion. And again, thank you to everybody who has provided input.
Thank you, Ryan, Counselor Bennett, and then Overwater.
Thank you, Your Worship. I too appreciate all the comments, all the emails, all the telephone calls regarding this. And it is a very divisive conversation. I generally wear a mask when I'm out in public and I wash my hands. I stay home if I'm not feeling well. And whatever the stores actually have posted on their doors, some say you cannot enter unless you're wearing a mask. I abide by the rules of those retailers. As far as Dr. Deena Henshaw, she's the expert. I don't propose that I or other council members are doctors. However, we have to trust someone and we do trust the science and AHS. So having said that, I find that now that the schools will be closed from the eighteenth of December to the eleventh of January, that there's probably going to be a lesser amount of COVID going through our, our town, hopefully. And I also want to wait the three weeks that Dr. Deena Henshaw had also suggested with the restrictions that came into place yesterday. So at this point, I am not in favor of a mask by law. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bennett. Counselor Overwater.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I too thank everybody for all their comments, taking the time to do that and to come on our Zoom meeting here today. I just, you know, some of the comments that have gone around and some of the stuff that our staff has heard, I just really wish that, you know, and hope that people will respect each other, that, you know what, if you want to wear a mask, then you wear a mask and that's okay. If you don't want to wear masks, then that's your choice. And I think that's okay too. And I don't think you should be publicly criticized or accosted one way or another. If a store has a mandate that if you want to go into their store, you have to wear a mask, then you should respect that. And if the store doesn't, then you can still wear a mask in there. That's okay. So I too am not prepared to, you know, put a mask bylaw in place today. I would like to see how it plays out. I would like to see, you know, what the province will do in three weeks. And there was a comment earlier about, you know, people wearing masks. And then all of a sudden, it seems like more people that wore masks and the more numbers went up. So, you know, I've read several articles, either way, well, probably all of us have, good. Some say it's good to wear a mask. Some say it's not so good. So I just think that at the end of the day, we, we really need to respect each other for the choices that we make. And you're only making it for yourself. So don't be going out there and harassing other people, whether they have one on or not. And so I'm not prepared to pass a mask bylaw today.
Thank you very much, Counselor Overwater. I too will weigh in with my opinion as well. First, excuse me, by thanking all the citizens of the town of Olds and, and all the business owners in the town of Olds. When this crisis first hit us back in March, we were asked to do something very, very difficult and we locked down. And the town of Olds, as we are always, the citizens of Olds are leaders in this province and in this country. And you did what was necessary at that time to, to bend that curve and allow our Alberta healthcare or services, sorry, to, to catch up with PPE, other needed supplies and, and mandates and, and policies and so forth to handle a crisis like this. And I believe that they have done a phenomenal job. Our frontline workers in the town of Olds and the province of Alberta, Canada, have done an absolutely incredible job taking care of us through this incredible crisis. So I want to encourage citizens and business owners further, no matter what happens today here at council and no matter what happens into the future. Respect everybody's opinion. Please respect everybody's ability to conduct business in the way that they see fit. And I'm hearing some people say, well, such and such a business has a mask mandate, so I'm boycotting them. Or such and such a business isn't in favor of a mask mandate, so I'm going to boycott them. Please, let's not do that. Let's not go down that road. And please don't stop and chastise people for not wearing a mask. Or if a business does have that mandate for their own business to, to wear masks, please respect the fifteen dollar an hour employees, the young fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old kids that are there. Please don't, don't cost them and, and berate them for their company's policy. We need to ramp up respect for everybody in our community. Because I know these are trying times. I know the mental health issue is, is, is massive on every and we're all feeling it. Everybody's tense. And I want to just please beg everybody in our town, whether you live here or not, whether you're a business owner or not, please let's respect everybody, everybody else that you run into. I'm along this sort of lines that here in the town of Olds, we don't have the resources like the Alberta Health Services and Dr. Henshaw have. We do not have the experts that she has at her beck and call that can advise her on this, on this very important issue. So I, I too am leaning towards deferring to hear what the Alberta government has to say in, in three weeks. And if it happens with our numbers in the meantime, the Alberta government has stepped in with Calgary region and the Edmonton region and has made masks mandatory in those areas. I'm sure if our numbers dictate it and we get up to the, to the level of infection that those two centers have, I'm sure Alberta Health steps in and make it mandatory here in the town of Olds. And I just feel that the resources that we have, we shouldn't be overriding the resources that the Alberta government has. So with that in mind, we can do a couple of things here, council. We on the motion that we have on, on the floor for second reading and go forward that way. Or we could, I would entertain a motion to table this issue until the Alberta government has a time, has a chance to see if these new restrictions are flattening the curve in three weeks. We can always bring this back at any time. We can call a special meeting at any time if we have evidence that shows us print than what we've been presented today. So at this time, if anybody would like to make a motion to table this issue to go forward, we can certainly do that. Counselor Thompson, you had your hand up first.
Yes, Your Worship. I believe the process here would be Uh, yes, your worship. I, I believe the process here would be to call the question uh, that's on the floor, if that's what I wish to see happen. And so I'd like to call the question.
Okay. Um, uh, Counselor Harper. You're muted, Counselor Harper.
You have to unmute yourself, Mary Jane.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I want the question called right now.
Yes. Um, well, are you willing, uh, make a motion to table this issue, Counselor?
I am, um, moving to table the, the issue, the motion.
Okay.
I'm not sure that I want a time period though, your worship, because as, um, both our C O and our Director of Emergencies Management, uh, have indicated, this whole situation is very fluid. So if we put a timeframe on for tabling this motion, uh, we would be, would be, have to stick to that. I just asked that question.
We don't have to put a time on it whatsoever. And like I said, if we get new evidence, we can call a special meeting tomorrow and revisit this issue at that time.
Could I defer to our legislative clerk for that answer?
Yeah, yeah. Legislative clerk would, uh, am I correct in my assumption there?
Hi, it's Marcy. Um, I would encourage coun- last to, uh, table the vote and it can come back at any time.
Okay.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Answers my question. So I shall move that we table this, the, the vote.
Just a minute here.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson had a motion on the ta- on the floor. So do we not vote on that? I'm Counselor Harper's was after Counselor Thompson's motion. So maybe Marcy, you can give us some clarity on that then?
So my understanding on call the question is that Counselor Thompson wishes to end the debate. So council can vote on the ending of the debate. And then Counselor Harper's motion is on the floor that can be voted on after.
Okay. All right. So, uh, we are going to call the question. Uh, is I think we've had enough debate on that. Is there any on calling the question? Seeing none, then I will call the vote on that. All in favor? And opposed? All right, that motion passes. So we will end debate. Now we have a motion on the table to table this issue. Determined amount of time, we can call it tomorrow or we can call it six months from now. And, uh, depending on the evidence that we have in front of us. Uh, any hate on that particular motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote on that. All in favor? And opposed? All right, that motion passes. So we will table this issue. Um, uh, the town of Olds bylaw twenty twenty dash twenty mask about the table, an indeterminate amount of time and we can bring it back at any time, uh, administration or council sees fit. All right, that ends item three C. So we do have a little bit more, uh, on our, um, agenda today. We do have item three D, a public at large appointment. And, um, we will need to go, uh, to a closed session for that particular item. And, uh, as I did last time on this particular issue, I am calling a pecuniary interest uh, in this matter. So I will myself, so I will ask Counselor Blatz to, um, table or to, uh, um, chair the meeting until some time has decision, I can return. Excellent. So if, uh, Mr. Fox, we can, uh, who do we need? Uh, or sorry, I'll, I'll leave and Counselor Blatz, please, uh, go into camera and do your thing.
Great. I will. Counselor Thompson, you have your hand up.
You could put me in the waiting room.
Yeah, I, I, I was reminded here not too long ago that I needed to declare why I had a pecuniary.
Sorry.
And I wonder if the mayor wanted to do that.
Mayor? Yes, they would like you to declare why you have.
Um, well, sadly without review, why are you going into camera? Um, I have a personal connection to the person you're about to talk to.
Turn your mic off. Or something.
Well, he
Okay. All right. So, um, I will call the que- I'll ask for a motion then to go into a closed session under Foidt section sixteen, I believe it is. And I need to find out who's staying. Um, who's staying? Uh, Counselor, uh, Blatz would be, um, the C O, um, Mr. Larry Wright and counsel. Okay, thank you. So I will ask then Sean, our I T man to please put everyone in the waiting room. And then are you moving then to go into the closed session, Counselor Overwater? Yes, thank you. Under Foidt sixteen. Yes, it is. All right. Uh, all in favor of the motion then to go into a closed session? Okay, that is passed. Thank you so much. We will wait till everyone is in the waiting room.
Counselor, there's a large number of people, so this may take me a bit.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt, for letting us know about, uh, passage by Mountain View County.
Yes, that's good news for sure. I'm glad to see they quickly passed it without any change. So it looks like we are good to go as a uh, new YDP.
Awesome. Great news. Curious about this event. That was weird.
Okay, counsel, I have, um, Mr. Merritt, Mr. Wright and counsel as the only ones in the meeting right now. Uh, give me twenty seconds to leave the room, please.
And make sure you take it off record, Sean, please.
Absolutely. And, um, also just text the mayor, I guess, when you're ready to go back so that I can come back in and undo all this.
I will do that. Thank you.
Okay, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order at four forty. I believe that we do have a, uh, rise in reports. Um, Counselor Overwater. Sure. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Blatz. Yes, I move that we accept the, um, appointment of James Carpenter to the Cape, to be our business Cape representative for the town of Olds. Thank you so much. Any further comments or questions on that appointment? Seeing none, then I will call the que- the call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes four to two. Thank you so much, folks. I guess we will now have the mayor rejoin us.
He's just coming back in now.
Thanks, Sean.
Oh no, something happened. I do duplicated. There's two of me on the screen now. That's, that's not a good situation. Quit laughing, Dr. Chat.
I only see you there once.
I only see you once.
On my screen, there's two of me. Oh no, here he comes. Good. It's only one of me again.
Where do I take one of you?
Thank you, worship. Um, our rise and report was to um, come moved by Counselor Overwater to appoint James Carpenter to the Cape um, executive board as business representative for the town of Olds. And that motion was carried forward to.
Excellent. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Harper. Yes.
Um, the motion is to appoint Mr. Carpenter as our business rep.
Yes.
To Cape, not to the executive board.
Oh, to Cape, pardon me.
It's Marcy point of it, um, information. Is it, is it James Carpenter or James?
Yes.
James Carpenter. Yes, Marcy. I'll, I'll take this out and send it to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So we're back in session, correct?
Yes, we are.
Alrighty. Um, okay, so that leaves us adjournment. Unless there's anything else anybody has to say? Seeing none, I'll take Counselor Ryan, you are the lucky one for adjournment. All in favor? And opposed?
Oh, I'm in favor.
I knew you would be.
Sorry.
All right, we are adjourned.
Wake up.
Wake up, wake up.